Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to the City of Douglas Mayor Commission Meeting. This will serve as our regular meeting and we're going to have Commissioner Pearson introduce the invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, we have with us giving us our invocation Reverend Leroy Spivey. He's the pastor of Douglas Christian Fellowship on Highway 158. So at this time Reverend Spivey, if you'll go to the podium. And there are the church who have all the beautiful lights out there for Christmas.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's an honor to be here this evening. I feel right at home because you know every month or so I have to have one of these hard knock meeting meetings.[60.69][60.70](laughter) Everything's all right. Everything's all right. I was thinking, I was thinking today, and I'll call your attention to a couple of things that we have prayer. But the first mention of how the people in ancient times and biblical times expressed their desires and evolved into a governmental situation where rules and regulations were made for the betterment of the city and communities. They picked out people who they felt was wise. They called them the elders of the city that had judgment and wisdom and understanding of the times and the needs of the people. And they met at the gates of the city. And that's where the business was transpiring. Now, you noticed that in the days of Boaz when Ruth came back from Moab with her mother law Naomi. And Naomi's husband had died and there was a lot to be done about redeeming his inheritance, eliminate his inheritance. And so they met in the gates of the city. And Boaz paid the price of redemption for the land that was being held by someone else. And so it's done in the gates of the city. And then in Proverbs where it talks about the virtuous woman, it says her husband is known in the gates of the city. That is, he was one of those wise people who helped make rules and regulations and governed the people and do the things that benefited everybody as equally as possible. So that is where we are, except now your peers and people that see wisdom in you elect you to do the job. And what a responsibility. And when you, when you do your business and everybody agree on everything, we have our times of, you know, of discussion and the vote goes and as it goes, we go with the vote. But there's sometimes frustration and sometimes people wonder if I've done my best. But when you offer yourself as a servant to the people, you take on that responsibility just to simply do your best. And the word of God tells us that if we seek the Lord and we pray that God would direct our paths, not just in religious matters, but in all matters that pertain to the welfare of folks. And that's where we are tonight. You are blessed with wisdom and knowledge and you do those things that you feel that would be good for our city and our community. And we thank you for your service.
Thank you.
And our prayer.
Thank you.
Father, we do thank you for people that are willing to serve, that rise above the things that some people hate to be involved in. But somebody has to do it with wisdom and knowledge and understanding. And I thank you for those willing to step forward and do the service of the people. We pray blessings upon our mayor and upon all the city commission tonight and all the agenda that they're going to consider tonight. Your will be done in all things and we pray blessings upon them. Let this be a great new year for Douglas and Coffey County and for every citizen in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Reverend Spivey, we appreciate that.
Mayor, I think he was talking about me when he said about that wisdom and stuff.
What good words. Start a new year off with those.
Next on the agenda, would you please stand? We're gonna have our pledge of allegiance. As always, we are led by the dynamic Coffey County Navy Junior ROTC. And with us tonight to lead us in the pledge is Ensign Avalos.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Next on the agenda, we have the approval of the order of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been motioned second. Any further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Where'd it go? Where'd it go? All right, I'm gonna vote in there, okay? Next on the, on the agenda, we have recognition and presentation of certificates. And Commissioner Pearson is gonna lead us through that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I would like to recognize some of, a few of Douglas's finest. Not our PD this time, but our fire department. On approximately December the 26th, I was taking some trash outside and my neighbors across the street from little kids, they asked me, "Miss Libby, what's wrong? What's wrong? What's going on?" I hadn't even paid any attention. But a little bit down the road, come on in gentlemen, a little bit down the road, I saw a fire truck and I saw police cars and this, that and the other. So I managed to hop down there to where these gentlemen were. And lo and behold, there was a child stuck in a tree. My neighbor, little Jacob Hayes, that's his name. He was stuck up in the tree and I was, oh, I got so scared. And I looked and these gentlemen were working to get him out of the tree. What it was, so to all kids, young people, whenever you are out playing and you get excited about your, what you call those things, that's like drones. When you get excited about your drones and it goes in the tree, don't go up there.[479.12][479.13](laughter) Because I guess what it was, he didn't realize how high he had actually gotten. But he had gotten too high that he was afraid to come down. So just let it stay up there. Do not go up there. But these certificates are to recognize these gentlemen for their great work because he was really high up there. It scared me just looking up there and if he had tried to come down or missed steps or anything, we could have had a tragedy right there at Christmas time. So to those citizens who thought that we didn't need that city ladder truck for the fire department.[518.37][518.38](laughter) That's one time it paid off.
Two shakes.
It hasn't paid off many other times. So a lot of people told me when we did, "Yeah, we shouldn't have bought that." Yeah, we should have. It saved a life. But thank you gentlemen so much. This one goes to Lieutenant Mark Roberts and they are all read the same in appreciation of your dedication and contribution to the City of Douglas Fire Department for assisting and getting a child out of a tree on December the 26th, 2018. And it's given here on January 14th, 2019 on behalf of Commissioner Lemuel Pearson.
All right.
Thank you. I appreciate your service so much. And this one says the same thing, but it's to Sergeant Robert Beecher. Thank you so much. Engineer Cleve Lussi.[568.21][568.22](laughter) Firefighter Charles Payne. And this one is to firefighter Ordell Foskey. A very seldom found word I can't pronounce, but thank you. Thank you. But I couldn't get yours. Thank you gentlemen.
Yes, sir. I appreciate y'all. All right, Doug, give a couple of snaps, please. All right, thank y'all.[604.52][604.53](applause)
Mayor, that shows you how times have changed. In the old days, we used to have frisbees or a kite get stuck in the tree. Now we got drones, you know, so.
Well, the thing I was thinking about was a broke leg. You know what I mean? But while Commissioner Pearson is coming around, two things really quick. As you can see, that we are not at full capacity as the mayor and commission. Mr. Moore is still ill and is out. He's doing well. I talked with the son. So we'll keep him in our prayers. And the mayor pro temp had to step out to take care of another commitment. So with that being said.
I need my glasses.
You need your glasses? Also, you will see we have, what's this? Boy Scout 859 here. So why are you gentlemen here? Meeting the requirement?
We're gonna make them famous during the staff comments.
We're gonna make them famous? Long as, as long as they get some face time, I'm good. Outstanding.
Senior Patrol Leader Ronan P., I can't pronounce his last name. If I do that, I'll call you in just a second, but be on standby.
Be on standby?
We're gonna have him famous here.
Out, okay. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda items. As always, we'll have our city manager to read those items that we put on, I just thought this up, on the consent agenda. Okay. Because somebody's in the audience messing with me.
Okay.
It's okay.
We have eight items being brought over on the consent agenda and I'll read those out. We have the first one, item one, approval of the December 27th minutes. Item number four is being brought over, approval of the appointments to the Housing and Board Authority. Item five, discuss the approval or approve the qualifying fees and to run that advertisement in the paper. Item six, approval of the concrete asphalt grinding at the Davis property. Item seven, approval of the smart grid equipment replacement on the county water tower. Item eight, approval of the intergovernmental agreement between the City of Douglas and Coffey Regional Medical Center. Item nine, the approval of the waiver of fee for the Coffey County Extension Service. And item 10, approval of the date change for the upcoming meeting.
Thank you very much. At this time, I will entertain a motion to.
So moved.
Exactly. It's been motioned second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is work session items brought forth for discussion. Mr. City Manager, would you please lead us through this?
We have two items being brought over on, from the work session. The first item will be item two, that is the 2019 Mayor Pro Tem election. And our city clerk, Winetta Bolder, will tell you who the lucky one is.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here to announce to you all, I gave you all the ballot and you all turned the ballot in. So I'm here to introduce to you the 2019 Mayor Pro Tem would be Commissioner Mike Gowan.
Mr. Gowan.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item being brought over is item three, discuss the advertisement for the appointment to the Ethics Committee.
Okay, I'm here to advertise the appointment. We actually have, it's technically gonna be five. One of them has to be an attorney. Actually, one has to be an attorney. Another alternate would be another attorney. These individuals will come into the city clerk's office to be appointed. The Ethics Committee, what, committee, what they do is convene and hear possible ethic violations. If they have any, if anybody have any questions on what else you need to do, just need to be in, live in the city limits to do this. Like I said, you have an attorney. We need one to serve and one to be an alternate. And then the other three will be residents of the community. And we'll be doing this until next time that we meet, which would be January the 29th, I believe, that's the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have staff comments.
Go ahead.
Mayor, if you don't, we're gonna introduce the Troop 859 here.
Okay.
As promised earlier, we're gonna.
Let's do it.
We're gonna make the senior patrol leader here, Ronan P., when you come up here, you can do your last name justice. Because I only think South Georgian and some English, you know, and his name is, is a little further than Smith and Davis, you know. So come on up here and go to the microphone and tell us who you are and what you got going on and introduce the rest of your bunch.
So on February the 16th and 17th, on a Saturday and Sunday, we will be doing a flag exchange for a new flag where you can take a old patterned flag and we'll give you a new one. And we will properly retire the flag. And this is in the Lowe's parking lot and it is from 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM. Thank you.
What was your last name and what troop are you with and where are you from?
Um.
What church or what organization?
My last name is Ronan, or my last name is Pogetdenic.
That's why I couldn't say it.
We're a part of Troop 859 and it's located right here in Douglas. So yes, thank you.[994.41][994.42](laughter)
Thank you, young man.
And then you got Post 515 here, they wanna announce some items. Hey, man, I gotta think about something while I go. I'm gonna take a second here.
Oh, you're thinking?
Yeah. I started out as a Boy Scout. I wound up in some military activity. My ex-pastor was just here, so if y'all got anybody to blame, it might be those three organizations or command either one of those. I don't know which one, but go ahead commander.
My name is Alfaleen Walker. I'm the commander of Post 515 here in Douglas. First of all, we want to thank everyone for their support and assistance with Rees Across America. Just to report, we served 74 cemeteries and put out 2,696 Rees. We are in the process of gathering those Rees up now because they were lives, libraries and now they are withering away, so we're collecting them. So we want to thank everybody for their support to remember our veterans who served this country so well. We are also getting ready to introduce programs for 2019. Our first one involves the fifth graders from any public, private, and homeschool students qualify to write an essay about what America means to me. It is a 250-word essay and we're asking all counselors to help us get this application out. The prizes will be $100 for first prize. Second prize will be $75. Third prize will be $50 and a plaque. And we will give this to them during a ceremony. This essay is one of the ones that was brought up for our 12th district, which is out of Valdosta. Our chairperson is Carlos Goodman. He can be reached at 706-755-7954. The next item that we are so very proud to be a part of is to recognize the person from the Douglas area who's responsible for bringing the GI Bill, getting the GI Bill passed. And for those who aren't familiar with the GI Bill, it is the one thing that gets the education for military veterans. That person is Douglas's own and former congressman, John Gibson. During probably the middle part of February, there will be an exhibit at the Satilla Library. And Mr. Jerome Loving is the project officer in charge of that. This display will be at the library for 30 days. And we are very fortunate that we were chosen to bring it, to get this here so that our children and our community can see what an awesome person we had from Douglas. We're also having oratorical contests in February. The contestants are required to give an eight to 10-minute speech on the Constitution of the United States of America, which they develop as they see fit. They're required to give a three to five-minute speech on an article or amendment chosen by the contest judges. Now, this is really hard, so what we're trying to do is make sure we get students involved and this will give them a time to win money for schools and going to college. We're also in cooperation with the Boy Scout troop, collecting old flags, funds that are beyond repair. They're collecting and giving you a new one. What we're going to do is make sure we get all of them and in June dispose of them properly at a flag disposal ceremony at our post on McLean Street. So we're asking you to make sure the Boy Scouts get the flags so we can make sure we're doing due diligence and letting them get their badges and earning their civil duties. We are also going to plan a conference for veterans and their family members so that family members can understand things that veterans go through, what their rights, responsibilities and things are, because sometimes veterans do not share this information with their family members. And when times of trouble and stuff come in or desperation, you don't know exactly where to turn. So we're planning this and we'll get you further information on when we're going to plan this conference. We just want you to know that we are honored to be part of this community, that we want to serve you whenever and wherever we can and to make sure that the American Legion provides families to veterans, families, the community, and whatever else is needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Commander.
Commander, will you tell us the ages for the oratorical contest or grade level for that?
The oratorical contest is basically for, we can have seniors, graduating seniors, or nine through 12, starting.
Nine through 12.
Right, starting.
Okay.
Because one of the things what we're trying to do for oratorical, if you've never seen it before, these young people have to know what the articles and the amendments are and be able to speak extemporaneously and give a speech. That's quite difficult. So by the time some of our students have already got to be seniors, they're already ready. And this is something that just doesn't stay here. They go on to nationals.
Okay.
So it's not just Douglas. It's go, it goes up, all the way up and they compete in nationals if they are chosen. So we want to start it off right. So starting off at ninth grade, if they would like to. And we want really to get those students starting at the fifth grade by writing what America means to me.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Pearson, I really appreciate you wanting to hone in on the age limits because our senior citizen up here thought they was talking about him, so.[1372.52][1372.53](laughter) You can't participate, okay? They said senior.[1377.02][1377.03](laughter) I got you, okay?
High school senior.
Just kidding.
High school senior.
I'm just saying, I'm not talking about you. Miss Henderson? I'm just saying.
Thank you. Just a few announcements. We want to remind everyone that the City of Douglas offices will be closed on Monday, January 21st in observance of the Martin Luther King Junior Holiday. And also in relation to sanitation, trans waste will keep a normal schedule. They will run the trucks on Monday, so no one has to change around in regards to that. We are still accepting applications for our mayor's youth council, matter of fact, through tomorrow, if I'm not mistaken. Is that the deadline? Next Friday. What's that date? What's the date? Y'all have a count?
15th.
This Friday? 18th, thank you. So through Friday the 18th, we apologize for that. And also, we still need volunteers for our Douglas Youth Council, I'm sorry, Teen Corps. So if anyone is interested in volunteering, being a volunteer with the Teen Corps and getting those applications in, Ms. Williams, the coordinator, give her a call at 384-3302 and they'll get it transferred to her so you can get that information in. Our next community residential junk, junk drop off collection.
I know.
There's a lot to say. It's this Saturday. Remember citizens that we're holding those on the first and third Saturdays now and it's from 8:30 to 12 noon, be adjacent from the post office at the pole yard. So let's get Douglas clean. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna need the friend with the truck.
Junk drop off.
I'd like to just say one thing. We'd like to invite you all to come out on Thursday at 6 o'clock to our mayor's youth council. So we would love to see not only our mayor and commission, but everyone that's here and watching on TV to support the young people who I think are gonna have a very good agenda, so I don't think you want to miss it.
All right, thank you.
Wonderful.
I'll do my best, Ms. Winetta.
All right. Where are we at? We are at the point where it's time for the mayor and commissioners' comments and we do have an executive session and a utility. So let's start off with Mr. Gowan. Save me some time because I got something I want to say.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to wish everybody, this is our first meeting of the year, so I'd like to wish everyone a happy new year. And again, extend my appreciation to all our citizens and our city employees for all they've done throughout 2018. And I look forward to continuing to work with everybody in 2019 to make, hopefully we can make even more progress on behalf of our city and our citizens. You know, I always try to give a little bit of the sports update. If any of you haven't noticed, our Coffey County Trojans, boys basketball team is, I think, 12 and 2 is the latest record. And those two losses are not to any team in the state of Georgia, so they're undefeated in the state of Georgia. They lost to a couple of teams in out-of-town tournaments from Florida. But we've been able to get out there and check out a couple of games. They got something special going on. If you want some good entertainment and support our community, get out there and catch a game. I believe the next game is against Northside, one of Robbins, region game. That's about all I have, Mayor.
It's the next game, huh, Commissioner?
No, it's in, I think it's in Northside.
I think they got three straight home games. I mean, road games and they're coming back home.
Right. Tomorrow's in Northside, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Taylor?
Thank you.
With your brand new shoes. Keep you running fast.
I deal with you later on.
Keep you running fast.
Thank you, Mayor. Happy New Years to everyone that I haven't got a chance to wish a Happy New Year. Also, I'd like to say thanks to the citizens and the committee that I have worked with for the last year and a half. Appreciate what you all have done for the City of Douglas because without you all, the city would not be what it is now. Again, from me personally, thank you very much for all the hard work that you all do for the City of Douglas. I want to make an appeal to the citizens of Douglas about let's keep in, around our homes looking much better than what we are doing and everything. Please, ma'am, please, sir, let's take it, you know, pride in our homes, because we pay taxes, we have to pay for those homes. Let's keep the mattresses, the chairs, the sofas, television and all. The city have provided two junk Saturday in the month of each month for us to bring our junk. And they will take it off the truck. Only thing you got to do is load it up and pull up there and they'll take care of everything. So let's not put the stuff aside the road to make Douglas look, you know, like, you know, we don't have the facility to do what we need to do. So please, ma'am, please, sir, let us take advantage of the junk day that we do have set aside and let's make the City of Douglas look better. Also, we have had a lot of rain here lately and there are a lot of potholes that are in Douglas, you know. And if you run across a pothole, feel free to call the City of Douglas, report it. And I'm quite sure within 24 hours, someone will be out there to take care of, you know. I've got to give them a call myself because I've got a couple of potholes that I need filling, you know, and all. But please, ma'am, please, sir, let's clean up right in our house. Thank you very much.
Good. Commissioner McNeil?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, Happy New Year to everyone. And I want to thank our staff and our department heads for a great year last year. Did a fabulous job, I think, with, you know, we went through so many, so many good projects during the Christmas season from churches and civic groups and things like that. I think a lot of lives were touched and, and received the benefit of people's, of their contributions and things like that. And I just want to say thank you to everybody for giving during that season, the holiday season. I want to say also that we miss Commissioner Moore and we wish him speedy recovery during this process of rehabilitation for him and his family and everything. for him and his family and everything they're going through. We sure miss them and, or miss him up here. And we want to say best wishes and that we are pleased the new governor was sworn in, I think in Atlanta this week. And we all have the opportunity, our group up here has the opportunity to go this week to the, what we call the Okeechobee Okeechobee occasion. Where meet with our legislators and visit with them and some of the other leaders from the community. So we'll look forward to that if we can be in attendance for that. And I think, Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mayor, before Commissioner comes.
Go ahead, I'm sorry. I just want to say that I had an opportunity to go out and visit Commissioner Moore.
Good.
And I tell you, he's looking real, real good, you know. He asked about everybody and just keep him in your prayers. He's doing real good.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that.
Commissioner Pearson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to first of all say that I thank Reverend Spivey for giving us those words tonight that he gave us about reminding us that what a responsibility this is to sit up here. Because we are indeed a servant to the people, so we should always do our best. And in serving the people, you know, sometimes you have to put your pride or your thoughts or what you might want or whatever to the side and keep in mind what the people want, because the people are the ones who elected us to serve up here. So I just really thank him for those words of wisdom tonight. Also, I'd like to send out to Commissioner Moore, a speedy recovery and it's great that he's doing well. Commissioner Taylor, I didn't know that he was locally now, but that's great. That's great. He's coming along pretty well. The other thing that I'd like to say is I'd like to commend the Boy Scouts who are here tonight from Troop Eight Fifty-nine. Thank you all for your service for the good that you're doing in our community. Thank you for helping Post Five Fifteen. Also, thanks to the Post American Legion for their service. They are so committed, the two commander and former commander. So I thank you all for everything that you all do in the community as well. Lastly, I'd just like to remind everyone that we are approaching MLK Day, Dr. Martin Luther King Birthday Celebration is this coming Monday. And the Martin Luther King Committee, they have put on a, they've put a lot of work into this coming celebration. I'm just gonna begin it, but Attorney Julius Collins, Dr. Shayla Curtis, Jamie Young Gaskin, Defensive Freshman of the Year for Valdosta State University, and Contessa Streeter and some more. But I'm gonna let, since Mayor Protem Durn has came back, I'm gonna let him finish it. But I guess he thought he wasn't gonna make it back, but he asked me to share this. So to all of you, please try to come out and celebrate the good work that Dr. Martin Luther King has done for so many people, for all of us. We are in a better place today because of the works of people like Dr. King. He gave his life ultimately for peace. That's the greatest price that you can pay. So Mayor, if you want to turn it over to Commissioner Protem so he can finish telling them the details.
Will do.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor Protem?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Excuse my tardiness and not being here most of the meetings while we was having MLK meeting with the facilities and everything to get everything together. The MLK Holiday Two Thousand and Nineteen will take place at Central Square Gym on January the twenty-first at ten AM at the Central Square Gym. But let me first start over. We will be at Gaines Chapel for the prayer breakfast, which is Saturday, the nineteenth. The nineteenth Saturday at Gaines Chapel at nine AM. And we will be having a prayer breakfast. And then after that, our youth will go out and do service. Do types of projects, cleaning up, helping a neighbor, taking out trash, doing different things. They would do a service project after that. Then that Sunday evening at six o'clock PM at High Tower Memorial Temple will be our commemorative service of Dr. Martin Luther King at High Tower Memorial Temple where Pastor Raymond Scott is the pastor. But the speaker of that evening will be Dr. Beverly Glover from Macon, Georgia. Her husband is the moderator of the Baptist Association in Macon, Georgia. And she will be the speaker for that evening. And also, we will be doing a little competition thing with the pastors, getting every pastor, getting every church involved. If your church comes with your pastor, and we're trying to recruit every member to come out so we can make it great. If you're, we're doing a thing about if you have the most people from eighteen on up and your pastor must be present, you will get five hundred dollars from the MLK Committee that will go to your youth department. But, I mean, it can't be nobody eighteen and under. It has to be eighteen and older. And your pastor has to be present for you to qualify in it. And that will be the twentieth. Then on that twenty-first, we will be celebrating Dr. Martin Luther King Day, which is this day on the twenty-first, at Central Square Gym at ten AM, Gym A and Gym B. We will be doing an expo. We will be doing a concert. The concert will take place at ten AM to eleven PM. Featuring our MLK Youth Choir, what we have every year, that's directed by me. And after that, we will have the expo. The expo will be different businesses, all the way from Reese Snack and Shack, Country Style Ribs, Your Cardi Healthcare. We will have different school vendors such as Valdosta State, South Georgia College, Wiregrass, Savannah State, Clark Atlanta University. That's Commissioner Pearson's alumni. We will have just different, different schools. Then we will have also different vendors such as Three L Consulting. We have the mayor's youth council. We have, it's about twenty to twenty-six to thirty vendors that will be there. And after that, we will have the expo. Then after the expo, we will break into classes, some from the age of two to six. And then from eleven to seven, we will have arts by Ms. Contessa Streeter. And then from twelve to sixteen, I mean, twelve on up to ages sixteen or eighteen, that's when we'll be having the seminar with Attorney Julius Collins from Douglas, Georgia. We will have Dr. Shayla Thomas Curtis of Darmany Medical, Family Medical, out of Fitzgerald, Georgia. She's a native of Coffey County too, of Douglas. And also, we will have Erica Preston to talk about inner beauty as well. And that's basically it for that MLK celebration. And then after that, we were saying, but while we're eating and stuff, we were saying happy, what we do with the children every year. We were saying happy birthday to Dr. Martin Luther King. And also, if you would like to purchase a T-shirt from the MLK Committee, you may contact Ms. Murray, Ms. Irene Murray at nine one two three eight four one one, I mean, nine one two three eight four three one one six. If you're interested in a T-shirt, all funds go towards the youth choir to take them on a trip to Washington DC. Every two years, we take a trip and plan to take our children somewhere. And that's about all. I done took all my time talking about MLK, so. I mean, and I got another question too. Will y'all be doing a cleanup on that MLK Day? Okay, okay. I'm just saying.
We're gonna, we're gonna have it later on in April. Is it April, right?
Because I enjoyed myself last year. That's why I asked. Okay, April. I beat it, April. I enjoy it. I enjoy it, Commander Lovey. And that's basically all I got to say about that. Just come out. It don't matter. I mean, don't matter who it is. Y'all come out and have a good time, okay?
That's right.
Okay, Boy Scouts, y'all come out. Okay?
All right.
Y'all look for me when you get there, okay? You gonna eat, you gonna have fun. Got bounce eyes and everything, so y'all come there. I'm gonna be looking for you now. Okay.
That's great.
That's all I have to say.
Thank you. My comments are as follows. Of course, this is our first meeting. Happy New Year. And I will encourage everyone, Pastor Spivey from Douglas Christians Fellowship, they have a beautiful display out there. And it's, I think it's still up. So if you want to go out there and take some pictures, I mean, it is fabulous. Every year it grows and grows and grows. So I know it was up this morning when I went to work.
He said it'll probably be taken down this week sometime.
This week, so get out there. I mean, it's a very nice display. As I said earlier about Mr. Moore, still a little sad that he's not here. You know, he's a member of our team. And you know, when you're not at full strength, it hurts a little bit. So glad to hear that he's doing well and we'll continue to pray for him. Also, the newly elected Mayor Protem, Mayor Protem Gowan mentioned about the basketball. One of the things I want to make sure that citizens recognize is that if you're sixty-five years old, you're getting all the games free. If you're sixty-five. If you're sixty-five, you're getting all the games free. Now.
Wait, which games you talking about now?
Football, basketball.
Wait, Coffey County stuff? Okay, I thought you was talking about red, red. Okay.
It's been like that for years. I mean, at least two or three years.
That's good.
It's been like that for two or three years. So try to get your grandparents to come out, some of the senior citizens, get them out the house. It's pretty entertaining when you get out to the football games and the basketball games. So want to make sure everybody knows about that. The other thing is, look, fellas, next month is Valentine's Day. Next month is Valentine's Day now. Don't be up there covering it up with a ten dollar gift card. No. You want some of that blue money. Some of that blue money. Well, we don't want no loud money. So you got to make sure you take care of that woman right. But women, you also have to make sure you buy something for those guys. And for the first lady of the city, my wife, Bass Pro Shop don't have nothing your husband want. Don't have nothing that I want, okay? So the other thing I want to talk to you about, real quick, Pastor Martin Luther King Junior's celebration, the Mayor Protem has spoke on it. There's a lot of activity going. Commissioner Pearson has spoke on it. One of the things I want to share with you is that I read a lot of things from Dr. Martin Luther King, particularly his speeches. Now, people say I'm long-winded. Dr. Martin Luther King was long-winded. That "I Have a Dream" speech was just short. It was just short. So but one of the things that I try to get individuals to understand is that I think that Dr. King left us a blueprint. And one of the things that is very difficult for people to understand, prior to Dr. King being invested in the civil rights movement, there was really not too many high-level meetings being held with our federal leaders trying to come up with some type of resolution. It was violence on this side. Well, if there's violence on this side, then violence equals violence. Well, when Dr. King came in, all of a sudden, he said, look, nonviolence. And one of the things, I'm not sure if individuals know, Dr. King actually had six principles for the nonviolent movement. The first principle is, nonviolence is a way of life for courageous people. It is active nonviolence resistance to evil. Let me say that again. Nonviolence is a way of life for courageous people. It is active nonviolence resistance to evil. Principle number two states, nonviolence seeks to win friendship and understanding. The end result of nonviolence is redemption and reconciliation. Principle number three states, nonviolence seeks to defeat injustice, not people. Nonviolence recognizes that evil doers are also victims. Let me make sure I say that again. Nonviolence seeks to defeat injustice, not people. Nonviolence recognizes that evil doers are victims also. Principle number four states, nonviolence holds that suffering can educate and transform. Nonviolence willingly accepts the consequences of its acts. And some of those consequences are, look, I'm gonna protect myself while you put dogs on me. I'm gonna protect myself while you turn a water hose on me. I'm gonna protect myself while I'm being beaten. But I will not lash back out. And the concept was, if you have violence on this side and violence on this side, nobody is really engaging. So now all of a sudden, you have a nonviolent movement, all right? If they're nonviolent, why are you being violent towards them? So that made the individuals on this side have to stop and pause. Why are we doing this to somebody that's not doing anything? Principle number five says, nonviolence chooses love instead of hate. Nonviolence chooses love instead of hate. Nonviolence resists violence to the spirit as well as the body. Nonviolent, nonviolent love is active, not passive. Nonviolence, love does not sink to the level of haters. Remember that now. Nonviolence, love does not sink to the level of haters. Love restores community and resists injustice. Nonviolence recognizes the fact that all life is interrelated. Remember that now. All life is interrelated. The last principle is this. Nonviolence believes that the universe is on the side of justice. Nonviolence believes that the universe is on the side of justice. The nonviolent resister has deep faith that justice will eventually win. So I don't know if anybody's ever read that or even knew that those were those six principles that Dr. Martin Luther King introduced into the civil rights movement. And you know, throughout the year while I'm in church, there's normally passages in the Bible that just chased me the whole year. And for some reason, this year, I cannot shake this one sentence in the Bible. With love and kindness have I drawn thee. With love and kindness have I drawn thee. And there's a difference when you're trying to draw people to what you're trying to do by having a conversation. After Dr. King was invested in the civil rights movement, you see him in the White House. You see him talking to Congress. You see him talking to the, to the state's governors, all elected officials, trying to say, hey, look, this is what's going on in the black community. What can we do about it? What can we do about it? And as I say quite often, all the wars of the world end when two individuals decide to sit down and have a conversation inside a piece of paper. We've had millions of people killed because at the onset, a couple individuals could not sit down and hold a conversation. Dr. Martin Luther King introduced, let's sit down and have a conversation. Let's sit down and have a conversation. And that's what I want individuals to understand about Pastor Martin Luther King Junior's Day. Nonviolence, nonviolence, and having a conversation. There's nothing wrong with having a conversation. And we must all remember this right here. And I'm gonna close with this. I used to show my daughters this all the time when they were small, when we were stationed at Fort Gordon. The March on Washington, the next time you look at that picture, I need you to really be focused on it. There are not just black people there. Just not black people there. They're not just black people there. Just not black people there. They are white, Hispanics, male, female. Everybody is there. Because we as a country had to come together and recognize the injustice. And it took all of us, Catholic, Protestant, Baptist, AME, everybody, to come together and have this conversation. And we get the opportunity to enjoy the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four. All that transpired because of a conversation with everybody at the table. So as we go forward and we celebrate Pastor King's birthday, remember this. Remember these six principles and try to apply it. Try to apply it, because this is something that I try to do in my position as the mayor. And I remember this right here. "With love and kindness have I drawn thee." "With love and kindness have I drawn thee." And love is an action word. So with that being said, I will entertain a motion. You have something?
No, I was gonna say utilities first.
We're gonna do utilities first? Okay. So the utilities, we, we're going to... I thought we did the executive session first.
But we can go into utilities.
What you can do is you can do a recess, then take up the utility matter.
And then come out of recess.
If you come out of recess, we're back in the regular meeting, back to motion going to executive.
Sounds good to me. At this time, I entertain a motion to take a recess.
So move.
It's a motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor? We stand in recess. We're gonna take five minutes, let everybody get up out of here.